Being six o'clock on Monday, December 16th, 2024, I will call the Board of Selectmen meeting to order. And as a reminder, this meeting is being broadcast and recorded.
I know. I'm hoping that was back when they were down by Kenova. That was a problem.
Yes.
I will entertain a motion to approve the weekly warrant in the amount of $936,741.38.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I will entertain a motion to approve the minutes for the Selectmen's December 2nd, 2024, open meeting.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I will entertain a motion to approve the minutes for the Selectmen's December 6th, 2024, open meeting.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I will entertain a motion to vote to hold the annual town meeting on Monday, May 5th, 2025, starting at 6:45 PM at the Essex Elementary School.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I will entertain a motion to vote to open the warrant for the annual town meeting and accept articles for inclusion in the warrant until 3:00 PM on Thursday, February 27th, 2025.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I will entertain a motion to vote to accept the reports for the annual town report until noon on Thursday, January 30th, 2025.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I will entertain a motion to approve the request from Douglas Woodman to close Woodman's Restaurant at 119 Main Street for cleaning, repairs, and general maintenance from January 5th, 2025 through January 20th, 2025.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Thank you. Next on the agenda is the resignation of Fire Chief Ramey Reader, and I just want to make sure that the Board of Selectmen extends its gratitude for, to Chief Reader and the dedication that he's given to the town. He will be missed as the chief, however, he will be staying on as a firefighter EMT, so we're grateful for that. So I will entertain a motion to vote to accept the resignation of Fire Chief Ramey Reader from the Board of Engineers.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I will entertain a motion to vote to appoint Ramey Reader to the position of firefighter EMT with the Essex Fire Department.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I will entertain a motion to consider appointing Christian Hassel to the Board of Fire Engineers.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I will entertain a motion to approve the request to appoint Olivia McNeely to the position of EMT contingent upon successful completion of drug and medical screening.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I'm going to stop there because I think the next one needs some explanation, and we have an appointment in one minute, so I'm just going to hold right there.
Peter, do you have the folder in front of you with the Woodman's language and, or you do? Perfect, thank you.
I'll wait for you to do that.
Those, I signed them, and I think you have too.
Yeah.
And it's just that first one. Can I just ask you, as far as Christian Hassel, has he been, I'm assuming he's been one of our firefighters for?
Christian's one of the lieutenants, and with Ramey stepping down, he's being promoted from a lieutenant to the Board of Engineers.
Right.
Maureen, it's 6:05 if you want to join us at the podium.
Wendy's going to come up, she's my office manager, so she's going to take notes.
And just as a reminder, if you can speak six inches away from the microphone so that it's captured online.
Got it. So, okay, so what I understand is I'm here today entertaining the idea that we're going to get two annual entertainment permits on our existing licenses, one for 125 and one for 119, which is the tent. And when I left here at last time, you were going to go to your council to see what you were going to present to me as far as language from your council. So that's where my expectation is today. We have not submitted any applications as of yet because I think we're still in a negotiation situation. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Thank you.
So, Maureen, you did receive the email from Brendan outlining the language that we were recommending, which is to basically incorporate into an annual license the policy as it sits with a one-hour Bluetooth for, let me get the exact language, bear with me.
You might want to go over those, Ruthie, in bullets because I had already had a conversation with Brendan right away, and he said that anything that I had trouble with I should discuss right away because I don't agree with those. So I think we should go in order and see how we can play these out.
Okay, so why don't I let you do your complete presentation, and then we can discuss it?
So you start with what you have, and we'll see what we have. Doug, Wendy and Doug haven't heard from the council, so I want, I want, I want to be on the recording.
So the language that was suggested is this annual weekday and/or Sunday, because it would be two separate licenses, entertainment license is granted to be exercised within the confines of the so-called Salt Marsh Tent or Function Hall Tent on the property located at the address. Which tent shall be positioned in the approximate location shown on the attached, which is the plan that you've provided. This license is subject to the conditions set forth in the Key Elements to Be Reviewed section of the Board's Policy Concerning the Issuance of Entertainment Licenses, the policy, attached here too and made part hereof, which include but are not limited to the following. Number one, outdoor entertainment is limited to unamplified acoustic music not involving significant elements of percussion or horns provided, however, that the applicant may use a Bluetooth speaker for one hour or less for amplification of individuals' voices and recorded ceremonial music during weddings or similar events.
Okay, so let's start with that one. So right there.
Do you want me to finish this and then take them, or you want to take them one at a time?
Finish it.
For the Function Hall Tent licenses only. Number two, the entertainment will not be audible beyond the boundaries of the licensee's property. And number three, outdoor entertainment shall be limited to the hours of 1 to 8:00 PM, and the duration of the entertainment will be limited to four hours. Notwithstanding the foregoing, the applicant may apply for an exemption from the above-referenced permit limitations for specific events, which will be acted upon on a case-by-case basis. Any such application for exemption must be reviewed by the Board at least 30 days prior to the planned event. Applications will be acted upon by the Board in accordance with the Procedure for Review section of the policy, and the applicant must demonstrate that the requested exemption is consistent with the criteria in the introduction to the policy. Please be advised that this is not a permit to serve alcoholic beverages or to allow others to consume alcoholic beverages on the licensed premises. The service of alcohol at any given event must be separately permitted by either an annual or a one-day alcohol license specific to the venue.
Okay, so let's go to number one. First, on number one, the Bluetooth speaker for one hour for something and then ceremonies. So I'm a little confused on that. And it sounds like that was only to be at the Salt Marsh Tent at the, at the Function Hall. So originally, when I came here and we started this whole conversation, going back to what happened last year in, whatever you want to call it, negotiating, whatever, I wanted to have amplified music that would be for the three or four hours when we had the food truck there. There was never any mention of wedding ceremonies, so when that language came into play, I don't know if that's because at the last meeting you made reference to the ceremonies that happened in the early 2000s when we started to talk about the Function Hall Tent. So my first question is, where did that language about one-hour ceremonies come into play? Because that was never an ask from me a month ago.
I think at the last, the last time you were here, did you not discuss the need to have amplification for people who wanted to have their wedding out on the?
No, we did not. We made reference to the Function Hall having ceremonies. Ruthie specifically asked me, didn't you used to have ceremonies and people out there? What year was that? What we asked for directly was, that got us, got us to this point was, when we had actually Ramey Reader's party in June that Ruthie and LV attended to, I needed to have someone speak to present. Then when we had the ribbon-cutting ceremony that was at the other tent, I needed to have someone speak when they cut the ribbon. And then the third thing that I brought up to you was the child that played the guitar, and her parents wanted to film her so her brother could hear her in California, and we weren't even allowed to amplify her, and it was very windy at the tent, which is at the restaurant, and the wind was so loud, all you could hear was the creaking of the tent. So that was the exact language that we spoke about with the amplification and why I wanted it.
Right.
And out of all the things I asked for, I got an hour on a Bluetooth at the hall for ceremonies. So I'm confused.
Included, included within the permit, because we thought that you had a need to have people do their wedding ceremonies outside.
No.
You don't, so you don't have that need.
No, 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 no. Whatever need I have, the ask is that I can have amplified music that's unacoustic for speeches or speaking, whatever it is. So for example, if it's a ceremony or congratulations for your retirement, I don't ever remember talking about weddings. I don't know where it came from, it wasn't what happened last year, it wasn't the lack of, so, so let's go forward. Whether, whatever kind of ceremony it is, it's, we were trying to get amplified music because last year when I applied for the unamplified music, I was told to come back and applied for amplified music.
A second ago, you mentioned you, you wanted to have something within the permanent license for speaking, but you're also now saying that you want within?
I always wanted to have the person playing to be amplified. That, that has not changed.
Okay, so.
So that's where we started, then we had the second rendition in the middle of the summer last year, then, so, so when that came to me, I just stopped because I didn't even ask for that.
Okay, so you don't want that. This is?
For weddings, I guess, right? You don't want it for weddings.
Obviously, Peter, if there's a wedding, I would want it.
Okay.
But there was never a box that it was just for wedding ceremonies. And I don't know, Peter, where that presented itself from the last meeting that I was here or from anything that I asked you for all last year when I filed, and/or on any of my licenses that exist from the past year.
Okay, so you don't?
When that showed up, it was almost like a little sideways speed bump to what I asked for. I don't see what I asked for.
What you asked for is in here, but on a case-by-case basis, and that's what the Board discussed at the last meeting.
So we're back to, there's no amplified music. Let's say that. Is that what we're hearing?
Within the annual license, that's what it says, correct.
Okay, so, so that was what you were going to come back to.
Correct, that's in the policy.
That's in the policy.
And I think that that's what the situation is, that there's a policy, and we're, this was trying to be written up to match what the policy has with the addition of adding the Bluetooth.
Because if you eliminate the word weddings and you just say, the applicant may use a Bluetooth speaker for one hour or less for amplification of individuals' voices and recorded, you can say music, you could remove the word ceremonial or leave it, and during events, it?
It shouldn't be pigeonholed.
I think the, I think the point is, though, trying to stay within the policy, a policy that was put in place after other licenses were adopted, so trying to stay within the policy, what it does, Maureen, is it allows you to, instead of coming before us for every single time you want to have an event, it allows you to do it all year round for a fee. So instead of paying $20 for a one-day event, you get to pay $100 for a weekday event that you could do basically almost 365 days a year.
But if the girl was going to play an acoustic guitar for three hours under the tent, well, first of all, according to that, it would have to be a ceremony for one hour on a Bluetooth. I'm hearing that I could have her play for one hour with the Bluetooth, is what you're saying now. That's not what it was saying when Brendan sent it to me.
No, this, Ruth read to you exactly what I said. Right, this is from the email.
So we could say to the little girl, okay, Suzie, you can play for one hour, and then I have to shut the speaker off. Is that correct?
Right, so if she's playing an acoustic guitar, she can play it for four hours, but she could play it?
Only one hour is?
Is amplified.
Right. So I'm going to ask again, is there any way around that? Because on the, on the permits, there's a box to check for amplified or unamplified. And the whole purpose was, then we talked about all the parameters and how far away the abutters were, and we didn't really have any of those. We don't fit any of those boxes. We don't have any abutters that are in the rules. And we talked again that you could not hear these people when you were at the tent. The whole purpose of this was to try to get, to hear this people on, not percussion, not horns, not drums, not, you know, I don't know what else would be amplified. This is when you have this little girl just singing. It just seems funny to me. I totally understand when we go to celebrate the 250th birthday of the United States that if I want to get the big band, I would come here, ask for permission. I understand that. But we're still going back to what actually happened, what Woodman's actually wants, what Woodman's actually needs in order to have this small kind of backyard entertainment so that you can hear it.
I don't know.
Is that going to be the dominant entertainment is an acoustic guitar that may be amplified?
Yes, you might, you might just amplify the singer. You might as well just amplify the singer. So, so if Wendy's playing the guitar and I'm singing, and we're at the tent and there's a 15 mile an hour wind, you can't even hear that person because the, the reeling of the tent, I don't know if you've ever been to Woodman's tent, it's a big tent, you can hear it go, wah, wah. It's a, it's a very particular sound, and that's what happened when we had that lovely girl, and you couldn't even hear her, and her parents were like, please, can we put her on the speaker so my, you know, and I said, no, we can't.
How often does the wind blow like that?
I was there that day, and I was saying where I am now, and the girl was literally probably where this woman is sitting, and I could not hear her.
Does that happen every day, every once a month, once?
Pretty windy down there.
Yeah, but it's windy enough.
You know where the tent is.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
It's an open space. Again, there's no abutters, we're not, we don't have anyone that doesn't own Woodman's property 500 feet from our, whatever, is it 500 feet, Brendan?
Yeah.
That's, okay, that has to do with notifications of people for a hearing. It has nothing to do with?
I mean, I don't even think I have anyone in that, didn't we, we measured it.
No, well, you mentioned to me in the office that you felt like 500 feet from the tent itself, okay, that might be fine. But what we were talking about is when you have to set up abutters, it's from the property line, it's not, not from the tent itself.
Right, so we still don't have anyone 500 feet from the tent.
On the property line, you do. But it's, it's for another purpose, anyway.
So anyway, that, so I think that what I was asking for, and when I got what Brendan sent me, it was apples and oranges. So that's why I'm back here trying to figure out how to get, how to get what I want. So I want something, I'm willing to go along with the rules, I totally understand. The other thing I said to Brendan specifically that I talked about that's not mentioned here is the rain date situation. So what happened last year was, all the days that we happen to have someone canceled, so I couldn't cancel and go the next day for the rain date, and I don't see one piece of language there that mentions rain dates.
You wouldn't need a rain date.
That's why you came for an annual license. There were no rain dates.
There's no rain dates for annual.
That was discussed at the, the last time you were here. That's why we thought you wanted the annual license, because then you wouldn't have to be concerned about, okay, it rained this day, we're going to bring?
There'd only have to be a rain date if there was a special exemption where I came here, got a license 30 days out.
If it was a one-day license.
Had an acoustic amplified person, then I wouldn't be able to have a rain date with that one.
If it was a one-day license.
Right, because I don't have 30 days to get the next day.
Right, so you wanted to come for an annual license.
Right, so that's, but that's why.
And so this, this would allow you to do that.
With an unacoustic, one-hour Bluetooth allowed. So again, this is where I got myself in trouble, because I won't be able to come back here if I had the special license also, which goes along with what Ruthie just said. We're talking about two things, the annual license, if I need to get acoustic music, file the 30 days. So again, the whole thing's just, I think we better either start over again, because this is why I'm not filing the license, because right now you technically can't deny me because I haven't applied for anything. Is that correct?
Right, this is just an informal conversation, Maureen.
So, Maureen, are you comfortable with?
So I understand.
With two and three?
Well, what does two, what does two do for me, Peter?
Nothing. I mean, if you're comfortable with it, with the music not leaving the property boundaries, then you're comfortable with it, right?
It's not going to leave the boundaries. And what does, what does three, so Peter, what does three do for me?
Three allows you?
It's the one to eight. So if you wanted to do?
Four-hour period with a no eight.
I'm fine, I would, you know, I would have liked to have the, the power of 11 to eight just in case there was some, I don't know, like the car show or the clam fest, something came up, but I can come in ahead of time and?
Exemption.
I can come in and get that, you know what I mean?
Yeah.
I understand, again, I could be completely wrong, but I think part of the problem in, in the town or whatever, the abutters or whatever, is you really don't want that late-night music that was disturbing people at sleep. So again, sure, would I have loved to have it till nine o'clock, July and August? Yeah, but I'm not going to go there if that's a, a point of contention for the town. I'm willing to suffer it out and quit at five of eight, okay? Even though I know in those height of the 100 days, Father's Day to Labor Day, it would be lovely when it's the longest days of the year, right? But you know what? I'll give that one up, Peter. I'll give that up. I'll quit at eight o'clock.
So what you're looking for is a four-hour period where you can use, is the, the voice to be amplified all the time?
I would really like to have the trust of you people to try me out, you can always come up with some punishment for me, and I would like to go and be able to have, whether Wendy needs it on her guitar or I need it on my singing, or Wendy needs it on her harmonica. I mean, this is what we're talking about here. Harmonicas, guitars, I don't need, steel, the steel drum lady, these are not like, but again, I think the steel drum's going to be under percussion.
It is.
So, so the steel drum, that, again, that's where we went sideways on the steel drum lady, she just put it right on there. Now, again, I, would I love to have the steel drum? Yeah, steel drum's really a lot of money, too, so maybe for the steel drum day, I would apply for the special one, but then I can get kicked on the steel drum one with the rain date. So if I hire the?
But on the special permit, you can put a rain date, correct?
How do I know what the rain date is? What if the drummer's not available?
But I thought, I thought when you were doing your planning in the spring, you would be talking to them and you would make a rain date with them at that point, wouldn't you?
Not necessarily, you know, and then sometimes these people are just entrepreneurial themselves, it's not like I'm going to an entertainment agency.
Right.
Maybe on the steel drum, actually, I would be going to an entertainment agency, but we also use one that's local. So again, I'm just trying to get somewhere that's reasonable. I do not feel that one hour on a Bluetooth for ceremonies, first of all, is anything I ask for. Again, I apologize if I have miscommunicated. I, I went back to my notes to see if I even talked about that myself. I do know that it was brought up in passing.
So you don't, you don't want that even?
No, I, I, I want, I want that word to be speaking. I don't want, I want it to be voice. I want, I want that word to be voice, whether it's speaking, ceremony, singing, that, that's, the amplification is voice. Let's call it voice.
That's what it says.
No, not ceremonies. Let's, let's have it all be anyone speaking.
Well, it says individual voices and recorded ceremonial music.
Right, I feel like that's, that could be a little convoluted. I feel like when I saw that, I could get like, oh my God, what if it wasn't an individual voice ceremony? What if it was an individual voice singing? Does it say singing?
No.
Okay, so again, that's why, you know, you guys want to be really literal, and I want to be really literal, and then I want you to trust me and trust Woodman's, that we're going to try to make this happen, see if we can come up with some nice kind of compromise. Try it for a year, try it, see what happens. I mean, what are we really, truly talking? 15? Like, maybe?
15 events?
Maybe.
Yeah.
You know, I, I'd love to say that, Peter, I don't know, you know, Woodman's book's out so short-term.
The policy is there because of abutters and complaints.
Which we don't have.
And all that sort of stuff, so.
We don't have abutters.
You know, I, I am willing to try it until we hear anything from anybody.
Yeah.
You know?
Yeah.
But we, we should know whether or not you in fact amplified the music or the voice.
I'd like to say I'm going to, I'm going to amplify all the music and all the voice. Let's try that.
That's against the policy, the whole lot of stuff.
Well, then maybe it's time to look at the policy. What year was the policy written?
Five years ago, maybe?
19.
19, yes.
And why was that policy changed? Was the policy changed in 19?
No, it was created.
It was created in 19.
Okay, Doug's coming up.
Can I ask something?
Doug, can you just go to the microphone for me, please?
If on the application there is a box to check if it's amplified, what do you have to do to get that? Have to do a one-day?
Well, it depends on whether you're talking about a one-day application or the annual application. There's a box to check just so the Board understands what you're asking, doesn't mean they'll grant it, because the application is, this is what I'd like to do, and then they determine whether they would permit it or not on an annual license.
So if, like Maureen said, if we had a big band out there, I, I can see that would be a special event.
Yeah.
But usually, we have one person out there either with a guitar or a keyboard or the steel drums. So, like Maureen says, if we could just try something like that, even though you do have a written policy that you don't have amplified music.
I think the only, I guess the question for me would be, generally speaking, when we do an annual license, it's assumed that that license will be renewed the following year as-is with no changes unless we hold a public hearing.
Unless you hold a hearing and then show a reason, a reason why it wouldn't.
Right, just cause why you wouldn't renew it as-is. So my question is, where this is a trial, a conversation about the potential for a trial period, can you put a hard-stop date on it with the understanding that it's not an automatic assumption of renewal?
Yeah.
Because that's, that's where we get kind of pigeonholed, is that?
I don't think you can.
That's what I thought.
Because the law that governs it says, this is the procedure for not renewing, and it involves a hearing.
A hearing, okay.
You could hold the hearing and if you had evidence and say, well, we don't want to renew, and this is why.
Sure.
Yeah, and, and so that's, you're saying that it's the law that says that, and I, I mean, so if the season goes through and Woodman's has amplified and nothing happens, then why wouldn't we just renew it?
You absolutely would.
Versus if they, we get reports that the police has been there, you know, three times in the same week, or why wouldn't we even say, hey?
You would, you would, if you, it's complaint.
Through the hearing in the middle of July?
It's complaint-driven, so you would have a hearing as soon as you started getting complaints. You wouldn't let them finish out the license, you would bring them in for a hearing after the complaints, hold the hearing, and then determine what you would do at that point. You wouldn't wait it out.
Well, that's what I thought, okay. So, so I, I, you know, I am in, in agreement with Peter that, I, I don't think that this is extraordinary that they're asking. It is an outdoor area, it is, I do know that it's windy on the marsh, so I understand where they're coming from. Um, so I understand where they're coming from. I do think that whether or not there's a way of us putting in what level of ampli- amplification?
Well, I think that the level is that I can't leave the property.
Okay.
And, you know, I mean, the problem is when you start talking about decibels, no one can really measure decibels and depending on the wind, the river, the tide, the decibels are irrelevant. It's going to carry depending on the wind, like they're saying, you know, the wind carries noise. So you would leave it in there. Basically, your fail safe is that it can't not be audible beyond the boundaries of the licensed premises. And then it's, then it's defaulted to enforcement. Then it's complaint driven.
Separates Woodman's from potentially others around town because they don't have the space. They have neighbors, they have other things.
Well, I think that that's absolutely correct. This isn't precedent setting for everyone to assume that they're going to get this annual license. This is very specific to Woodman's. They have the largest parcel of land. They are their own butters. They are in this like perfectly little sheltered backyard area. So I, it doesn't apply to everybody.
Well, now it's important to understand, let's say the, the board, Woodman's worked something out that seems like it's something that you might approve or a majority of you might approve. They would need to put that down on the application and you would have to say yes to it. It's not, they come in and then you say, no, well, it has to be this. Well, then that kicks off a public hearing. And so what we're trying to do right now.
Come up with the bullets for the application.
Right, so that when you turn it in, it's your proposal that they could say yes to. I just want to make sure everybody understands.
Yes, yes. But, but the point being, if we're going to do a proposal, instead of taking all Pam's time, all Wendy's time, the back, the forth, which is what we've been doing the last four years with this stuff, I want to get it correct so I'm not wasting time. I totally agree that time is money on all of our ends here. And I'm going to ask you for a little good faith for us. And again, we do not have a 500 foot neighbor from the corner of the tent or the corner of the hall tent. If we do, it's one of us. So I just say, let's try it, see what happens. Again, I will also put an asterisk in there. If we're going to go above and beyond and do something special, I have no problem coming here for another license.
Yeah, I mean, if Metallica's coming to Woodman's, you're going to do a one day because you know that there needs to be notice to the community that you're going to have Metallica.
It's not who we are. You know that. Our motto in our tagline is family tradition. You know that. Okay? That's our brand. So it's not to have a drunken brawl. It's just to have something and try to get these kids in the community to come, have their parents come. Of course, it's a sales thing for me. I'm trying to bring in business, absolutely. But I'm not trying to like break the sound barrier, the seagulls or something. Like it's not.
So, so I think what Peter was trying to get at is that we're really talking about what goes into this point number one, correct? Cause you're okay with two. Um, you're okay with three. And so what number one says is outdoor entertainment is limited to unamplified acoustic music not involving significant elements of percussion. Now, right there, you're suggesting.
I would like to add the steel drums in as the exception to percussion.
Is that every, or the majority of the time?
You might get them twice.
So you could put a parenthetical that would be accepting, what, a single steel, is it a?
Single steel drum, yeah. It's a beautiful sound. It's not like a drum, drum. It's not like a set of five drums.
Then, um, and then it would keep in or horns, provided however, that the applicant may use, and you just want that part taken out. Um, well, actually, the applicant may use a Bluetooth speaker for how long?
Four hours.
For four hours?
Is that what it would be? A Bluetooth speaker?
Sometimes it's three hours, sometimes it's four.
Or other amplification?
The problem is when they hire out to DJs or people, they do four hour minimums.
I don't know if you should necessarily say Bluetooth because now there's, there's actually, I don't know if you want to call it Wi-Fi amplification. Because there's a difference between Bluetooth, there's, there's a lot of different stuff. You might want to call it Wi-Fi amplification, so you know.
I don't think, I don't think the method of communication with the instrument is, is what we're talking about. I think we're talking about the level of amplification, right? So you're talking about a single speaker? Cause amplification could be what the WHO does, right? And it's the whole wall. So we're talking about a single speaker, right?
Probably, yeah.
Put it in a single speaker.
So it.
Not Bluetooth.
May use a single speaker for.
Amplification.
Right, take out one hour.
Take out one hour, put four hours.
Or the amplification of individuals' voices and music, right?
Instrument, instrumental.
Yeah, we just say in music during, and we don't say during weddings.
It could be recorded, it could be live.
Singing, instrumental, music.
During events. So let me read it. So it would say, outdoor entertainment is limited to unamplified acoustic music not involving significant elements of percussion, excluding a single steel drum. And then or horns is included in what's, what's not allowed, provided however, that the applicant may use a single speaker for, um, the amplification of individuals' voices and music during events.
You need to change one hour to four hours.
Well, we just said, that's covered in number three.
Okay, gotcha.
Not to exceed four hours, because it could be three hours, it could be two hours.
Well, it says limited one to, one to eight for, yeah, it doesn't say, yeah, limited to four hours.
Within a window that's limited to four hours.
Yeah, so.
It could be anywhere between one and eight, but it can't be.
But, but four hours is good, okay? Cause let's just say the thing does run away from you. Let's say no one's there, then we can get rid of these people if they break the rules.
Right, but what it's saying is you don't have, you don't have seven hours. You have four hours within the seven hour window.
If I'm going to have seven hours, I'll come get a special addendum.
So with those changes, is that something you might be inclined to apply for?
Along with two and three.
Well, along with everything else that's here.
I don't, I don't think two really has any.
No, it doesn't.
I don't really know the purpose of two, to tell you the truth.
I, I think that is the fail safe, that it can't be audible beyond your property. That's the trigger for a hearing, because if we get, it's complaint based. If the residents, I know you're saying you don't have a butters, but you do on the backside of your property, at your property line, people live on Addison Street. People may hear it across the marsh on Apple Street. So there are butters to the property boundary. And not hearing it audible beyond your property is the trigger that, that would warrant a hearing. So.
I think it's fine. I mean, again, if the wind is blowing a gale and it goes at a high tide and the kayaker's going behind Woodman's, yeah, they might hear it in the river there. You know how close the river is? So maybe one of the kayakers, I don't know if they're a butters. Are the sup paddle people a butters?
Oh, but Lowland Farm and Apple Street and over there if the wind's blowing.
Somebody that lives in a house, brick and mortar?
Yeah, somebody, somebody that complains.
I don't, I don't think I'm going to hit any butters. It's not going to be that loud. So that's two. And then what's the basis of three?
Three is the one to eight, four hour period within.
That's fine.
So then beyond that, it says notwithstanding the foregoing, the applicant may apply for an exemption from the above referenced permit, as we discussed all of that. We leave that all the same. And I would just say in the last paragraph, it says, please be advised, you would, you would phrase it, the applicant acknowledges that this is not a permit to serve alcoholic beverages.
Correct.
Cause it's you saying it.
Yeah, and it might be events for music with no alcohol.
So my suggestion to Woodman's is you could mark up number one, as we just discussed it, and add the applicant acknowledges instead of please be advised in the last paragraph. And if you're okay with that and submit it, the board now has a chance to tell you whether they'd be inclined to. That's not up to me, that's up to the board.
Do you have that email I sent you? Yeah, I can find it.
I, I think Brendan, I was just going to say, would you mind copying and pasting that to her so she could, Wendy could just copy and paste that language?
So I'll take what, what I emailed you before.
Put it to Wendy.
I'll take what I emailed you before and I'll actually redline it and show you what I just read to you. And then you can take that and make that the basis of your application.
Okay, so I'll send that with this.
Right, just attach it. You, you would just say on there, please see attached description of, of, uh, entertainment.
So let's be clear. We're going to do one license that goes with the function hall.
You're going to do four licenses, two for each.
One license that goes with the tent. Then we're going to do one license for the hall for Sunday and one license for the tent.
That's right.
So there's four total.
That's right. And you just vary the wording for each one. When you make the attachment, this is going to say this annual weekday. The other one's going to say this annual Sunday. And one of them's going to say for the, for this place and the other one's going to say for that place.
To be clear, I can schedule stuff, but I don't have to tell you because I have this. Once I have this.
Once you, once you have it, that's correct.
Okay, can I just ask a quick question?
Wendy, can you just speak into the microphone, please?
Sorry. So, um, four licenses, two for each. The weekday would be Monday through Saturday and then a separate one for Sundays.
Correct.
Okay. Now, if we're applying for one for Sundays, do we have to apply for a liquor license with that as well? I don't know where, why I think that.
If you want to serve alcohol in that area on a Sunday.
In that area. And that's for any though, Wendy.
For any of the.
That's for any event, because you don't have an outdoor alcohol.
But I don't know why I thought that for Sundays, if we were applying for an entertainment license, we always had to apply for.
No, not if you're not going to plan to serve alcohol.
Okay. And that's only for the tent. We already have an alcohol license for the hall. So it doesn't, so we can have alcohol and entertainment all year long at the hall.
The hall's alcohol licenses for inside the hall.
No, we end outside. It has the outside liquor license. Pam, we went over this. The hall has an outside like liquor license.
I don't think so. You came into the office and we looked at it.
No, the hall does. The hall does. The tent doesn't. We've been doing outside cocktail hours there forever.
Yes, it describes the, what we call.
The corral.
The corral.
It says it on there?
Yeah.
Well, we'll look at that if that's what it says. But I thought when you came in, we looked at it and we couldn't find that.
No, we have that for the outside of the hall. We don't have it for the outside of the.
So Maureen, it's, it, I guess I want to straw poll the board and just see where everyone is before. But I want to ask if you have any final questions, because we do have another appointment. So do you have anything else to add?
No, I feel like this is a good starting point. Wendy and I will work on it. We'll get to you and like I said, we'll keep on working it.
So by straw poll, Alva, are you comfortable with the idea of four hours amplified as bullet one, the way that Brendan read it?
I am.
Okay.
I am as well.
Peter, you are as well.
And, and just to make sure that this, as you, you were saying, this is not setting up precedence for anybody else to just assume that they would.
That's right. This is a case by case application. You know what it is, Maureen? When you came in, we were talking about whether your entertainment license that's in the hall extended out to the lawn and we decided it wasn't. But the alcohol is, is different language. Now I understand. Thank you.
That's okay.
So do you have Wendy's email to send her that language? Okay. All right. So Wendy, Brendan will send you that redline so that you can copy that and attach to the four licenses, the requests.
The only thing that I would ask is, um, I know Maureen, you had mentioned about you, you know, you do have a calendar that, you know, anybody can, if you have that link that you could put on it, because I think it would be helpful for us to know.
Well, I won't, until I get the license in my hand, I will not book anyone. Once I have the license, we will create the, the something for everyone calendar.
You could just communicate that to us. Cause I think that's a, a good thing for the police to be able to say, oh, they have entertainment, you know.
And we like, we like the policemen and the firemen. We like, we like that. We like that they're down there to help us. We appreciate them always. We appreciate you. We're glad that you're willing to try this out for us. Um, and we'll do our best to make sure it goes well for everyone. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Have a good night. Jackson, if you want to join us at the podium, and I'm going to ask when you speak, if you could speak six to eight inches away from the microphone so that the, um, recording can capture your voice and the people joining us online can hear you. So before us this evening, we have Jackson Friedman regarding his claim of hardship with respect to applying for a commercial clamming license.
Sorry, I can't find the letter. It's, it's late in the permit cycle.
I'll give you a minute to find it.
We, you might have the only copy there.
Yeah, we didn't have it in the package.
Oh, you didn't? You guys did get this via email. You read it?
Yeah, yeah, I saw it in email.
So Jackson, I'm going to give you an opportunity just to address the board. So as you know, um, or, or maybe you don't, but per the clamming seaworm and eel regulations, you have to have applied for a permit by March 31st. And obviously you didn't meet that deadline of applying for.
I think it's the first Monday in March.
My apologies, first Monday in March. That's correct. Um, so you missed the deadline, obviously. So if you can just tell us a little bit about what's going on and then I'm sure that the board will have questions for you.
Yeah, um, I threw my back out and didn't think I was going to be able to dig this, this compass present year. And so I didn't apply for a clamming license and it turns out that I managed to work through it. It was bothering my sciatic nerve that I have continuous problems with. And it's made me not able to dig before in the past, but, um, it's better now and I thought I could come and pay the 600 for the late fee and then get my clamming license after the, as I understood, you could pay the $600 if it, if it was late.
That's, that's true. At the sole discretion of the board of selectmen. So when, when you're late, then it goes to the board to have a discussion about a hardship explanation or whatnot. Um, and I know I have questions, so, but is, is that kind of the whole presentation?
Yeah, that's pretty much all.
So I have questions for you. I mean, when, how much have you been clamming since you've, since you've been clamming this year? How much are you clamming and when did you start?
I, I might've gone maybe three times just to see if I could do it. Just, but I, my back just couldn't handle it.
When did you throw your back out?
Beginning of the year. I do hay, um, as a side job and I did it doing that. But it's a recurring, it comes and goes.
So January, beginning of the?
I'd say around the beginning of the, beginning of last year. It comes, the sciatic nerve, you know, it comes and goes, never really goes away.
Okay. And when did you first clam in 2020? When did you first go clamming in 2024?
I didn't know.
You haven't gone?
First day.
Yeah, I mean, just rough. I'm not, I'm not looking for you to pull out a calendar.
I can't, I don't know what the day, what month, what like when the first day I went was.
Do you remember seeing shellfish warden, Billy Novak on the flats back around April and he asked if you had your license and you said?
Yeah, that would have, yeah.
Back, so back in April, you were clamming?
Yeah.
Okay. I guess that's, that's one thing, which is that you were clamming in the beginning of the year and I spoke with Shellfish Constable Novak earlier today and he said that when he approached you back in April and said, where's your license? You said, well, I have it. I just haven't made it to town hall to pick it up. So did you think you had applied for one or I guess what was the?
I was just trying to see if I could do it. And then it turned out, it turned out I couldn't do it, my back being the way it was.
Okay. And you also provided us a letter, actually Natasha Taylor provided us a letter saying that you live at 67 Apple Street. I've confirmed with the street listing that you've been on the street listing since 2018. But I also confirmed with Dick Tomiello that you were renting at 74 Martin Street just recently and now.
That didn't work out.
It didn't work out.
Very short lived.
And now I'm, my understanding is that you're living in Salem.
Nope, I live with my aunt on Apple Street.
Okay. So the other question I have for you, Jackson, is it, you got a shellfish, a resident shellfish permit on August 1st of this year? Number 5593. And it appears as you, if you've been commercial clamming on a mess.
I did that so that if, when I went out to see if I could still dig, that I wouldn't be breaking any rules.
But harvesting, that would have been 15 pounds per hall, correct?
Correct.
And how much were you harvesting?
15 pounds.
So you didn't go over 15 pounds?
I wasn't commercial. I only went a couple of times to see if I could do it, like I said.
And when you were selling the clams to whomever you were selling them to, how were you ticketing those since you didn't have a commercial license?
I wasn't selling the clams.
You were just keeping them?
I wasn't selling. I wasn't digging enough to sell. I was just trying to see if I could do it.
Okay. I guess my concern is I think of this as a serious violation. Um, we're kind of in uncharted waters. We've, we've not, I've not ever had this come before me. And I just, I don't want clambers to think it's, you know, that we're going to just give a free pass when they're.
Someone, I heard that I had reports of my boat and trailer at the boat landing multiple times.
Yep.
And I hold about six other commercial fishing permits that are not connected to the town or clamming, which I do use. So that's, I go on my boat a lot and other reasons other than clamming.
Sure. Well, let us not forget, Jackson, that it was me that was down there for a totally unrelated to you complaint about parking. And when I came down, you were parked at the town landing without a resident parking sticker or a transfer station sticker. And then you did, you did go to the town clerk and get a sticker, but you were parked there.
That's another thing. I never went to the transfer station. We can.
No, no, no. What I'm saying is you were parked at the town landing without a resident parking sticker.
Did have an expired resident parking sticker.
Correct. Yep. So.
Does, do you have a, an up to date one now?
He does.
Yeah.
Yes. He, he did. As soon as we.
Just kind of slipped my mind.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
As soon as we discussed it, he went to the town clerk the next day and got one. But that was, when he's talking about parking there, this all came about because I was down there for a different complaint.
Sure.
And then while there for complaints, I looked at all the vehicles and there were actually five vehicles there, three of whom did not have stickers. So he was not the only one. So, but what's before us this evening is a letter of hardship that Mr. Friedman wants to continue clamming. And I think just wants an exception to see how the board feels about it. I guess for me, I'm a little uneasy about it. It just feels like he was trying to get, see what he could get away with a little bit and then unfortunately was caught. And now it brings him before us this evening. I do understand that he's paying the fee as well as a late fee. So there is that. He's trying to, you know.
And he's only got.
Three months.
Three months left. And then he'll have to get another license.
Right. So I think our options are we can renew and accept the check and let him continue to clam. We can suspend his ability to clam. So we have the regulations and a first offense would be a one month suspension. Or because it is serious that he's clamming basically without a commercial license, we could opt not to even renew it until the next renewal cycle. So, or you can just move forward and renew it this evening. I guess I just want to feel how you guys are.
My question is, has he done this before? Have we had any incidents in the past where clamming without a license? I, that's, that would be, if this is something that happened, has happened before, then I would be probably not inclined, but if this is something that is, you know.
I have never been issued a town clamming ticket. I've never violated any clam, town clam laws.
So when was your first year getting a clamming license?
I don't know that off the top of my head.
So safe to assume maybe 2018 when you, okay?
2017, I think it's right around where I, when I started.
And have you clammed every year?
Yeah, I've held a license, maybe every year, maybe except one. But I've had, I've held the license.
With the exception of this year. So this year, we already know is a problem, but every year except.
I think I had one year I didn't. I might've held the license, but I didn't go. But I think I've had a license every single year.
So it was in 2021, you did not have a license. So are we saying that was the year that you didn't have a license and you didn't clam?
Yeah. There was one year I didn't dig at all. I was lobstering.
Okay. So I obviously have already done the research of the years he had licenses. It started in 2019. And he had one in 2019, 2020, none in 21. He did have one in 22 and 23 and then not one in 24.
And, uh, parking stickers all those years?
I didn't look into parking stickers. I mean, that's, that's.
I wasn't, um, up until recently, I didn't have a driver's license. So I didn't have a vehicle to park.
And Jackson, so your, the letter from your aunt states that you live at her house. Do you live there 183 days a? And Jackson, so your, the letter from your aunt states that you live at her house. Do you live there 183 days a year?
More.
More, okay.
And my boat and truck and, I get all my mail there, my boat's registered there, my truck's registered there, you know, I live there.
I do have a copy of your registration and your driver's license being at that address.
I mean, based on the information we have, I mean, I tend to believe that he hurt his back, he stopped clamming, tried it every once in a while, thinking that no big deal, and he didn't sell the clams. I'm inclined to allow him to, to get another license. It seems as though, you know, he's maybe more lax on the rules and regulations. He might, might have talked to Billy and said, hey, I want to go out and try to clam. I don't know if I can, or something like that. Keep your sticker up to date and all that kind of stuff, and that might be his biggest issue. But I don't think he's really scamming.
Billy, do, I didn't ask, could you have anything that you want to add, other than what you've heard me present? Do you have anything to add to this conversation?
As he said, he's catching a citation. I'm going to have a problem.
I'm going to have him go to the microphone. Can you go to the microphone, Billy, so that we can capture it, capture it on recording?
Come on over. All right, I've never had any problems with this gentleman. He's helped me out a few times. He actively participated when we put the nets out. And so far, up until right now, just for this incident, he was following the rules, regulations, had to correct permits and things like that.
And Jackson, just so you know, when I spoke with Billy earlier this, this afternoon, he did sing your praises and said that you've been a great person out on the flats and that you've helped him on occasion. So this is not about your, you know, a personal attack. It's just about making sure we're doing the right thing. Billy, when you ran into Jackson on the flats back in April, and he was clamming, and you asked about a license, and he said he hadn't picked it up at Town Hall yet, did you happen to notice how much he had dug?
No, because a clamber will set up a base, and he'll go wander all, where'd he go? And then he get a bucket, he comes back, and he dumps it in one spot. And when I caught him, you know, half a bucket over there someplace, you know, like 10 pounds, and just said, you got your license, and he takes out, he shows me a state permit, which we have to get to get the commercial permit. And then I said, no, not that one, the other one. I haven't picked it up yet. Get it tomorrow.
Okay.
You know, as I said, I've never had a problem before, so I just assumed, unfortunately. It's an error on my part. I should have went and checked, you know, but-
Well, I just have one question then. If, if he hadn't, you mentioned you didn't even apply, but you told the constable you hadn't picked it up yet. Which is it?
What do you mean?
He didn't apply.
He didn't apply, yeah.
But he told the constable he didn't pick it up yet, as if he had applied and he was just waiting to pick it up. Those are two different things. I'm just asking.
He's basically saying he was being dishonest on the flats that day in April.
All right. Anything else?
No, thank you. Thank you so much.
No, but what I would stress, if we decide to approve this, that this, this needs to be produced out to everybody because we, we probably shouldn't, one, because you were dishonest on the flats in April. You should have said, oh, I'm just claiming for myself. I'm not doing commercial, or, you know, something less than-
Well, I'm testing it out to see if I can do it with a back situation.
Yeah. Or, or come, you know, come to the Town Hall, let the, us know that you were planning on going out to test, to see if you're back. That's the hard part, because if we, if we approve you, like Ruth was saying, everybody else could try the same thing. And then we're in a situation. But I'm inclined to approve this, especially with Billy's accolades and-
And Peter, you're inclined to approve?
I am.
Okay. So I guess before I entertain a motion, I'm just going to, we're going to use this as a warning to make sure that you, and I know that the guys on the flats are pretty close, and you guys all have conversations. I take violations very seriously. I'm all about enforcement, and I just want to be clear that this is the fir, this is the one and only free pass. So I will enter, and, and Jackson, not only for the license, but for resident parking as well, and all of the things that you need to do to keep up your license and to make sure that you're doing the things the right way to be on those flats. I will entertain a motion to approve the 2024 commercial shellfish permit application for Jackson Friedman.
So moved.
Second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
You, he'll pick that up from the town clerk tomorrow?
Yeah.
Or you send that to the town clerk, and she registers it. So how long until he should pop in to see the town clerk?
Probably tomorrow.
Tomorrow?
Yeah.
So-
Give her a little, you know, nine o'clock.
Yeah, I was going to say, give her a little time. She gets in at 7:30, so come a little bit later in the morning to see the town clerk to get everything that you need from her.
Got my license?
To get your license, right. You're awesome.
Thank you.
Thank you. Have a good night.
Oh, can't even dig tomorrow.
Because it's raining?
Low tides, like 6 o'clock in the morning. It's dark and dark, right?
Ah, that's right. So it's like the whole day they can't-
So Brendan, next on the agenda is to approve the inter, inter-agency agreement between the Selectmen and the Board of Public Works for the obligation of the town's remaining ARPA funding, if this instrument's determined to be necessary.
And we've determined, since this went on the agenda as a precaution, that it is not necessary.
Thank you. Have a great night.
It's not necessary.
Okay.
We, we have determined that the signature of the contract for the work on the wells was enough to obligate all the funds.
Okay, great.
That's tabled.
That's tabled. I will entertain a motion to ratify the chairman's signature on a contract with Weston and Sampson Engineers for technical review services to aid the planning board with the subdivision review, and all costs will be borne by the applicant. So this is the technical support for the OSRD that will be paid for by the applicant of that project.
How much do they expect that to cost?
Uh, they talked about $15,000?
$12,500 is the amount of the contract right now.
Okay, $12,500.
And the applicant would have to be consulted if there were other services that they felt were necessary for the planning board. I believe the applicant is going to pay separately for the Conservation Commission's review.
That's correct.
So moved.
Second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. I will entertain a motion to ratify the chairman's signature of contracts for state earmarks for, A, the improvements at Centennial Grove for $37,500, and B, the study and restoration of Chabaco Lake watershed for $20,000.
So moved.
Second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Other, is there anything unanticipated? Okay. I will entertain a motion to approve the Antiques License Renewal for Katrina Hassel, the Essex Wine Exchange.
So moved.
Second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. I will entertain a motion to approve the Common Victulars License Renewals for Calendar Year 2025 for Howard Lane Essex Seafood and Joshua Silvestine RDS Restaurant Group, and those are both contingent upon receiving payment for taxes and water and sewer.
So moved.
Second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Reminders that the next regular Board of Selectmen's meeting will take place on Monday, January 6, 2025, at 6:00 p.m., third floor auditorium of the Town Hall, 30 Martin Street, and that there will be a webinar with respect to the town's housing production plan presented by the Metropolitan Area Planning Council on January 30, 2025, from 7:00 to 9:00 p.m. here at the Town Hall.
Or you can dial in.
Or you can dial in. And we will be posted for that. So Brendan, if we want to go back to your report before we go into executive session?
With respect to the Affordable Housing Trust, the trust had the ability to meet with the personnel from MAPC who are now working on the housing production plan. And generally speaking, had a chance to ask questions and understand the direction things were going in. I just wanted to give the board a chance to discuss that. If you had any questions, that is what's giving rise to this webinar that will be offered on January 30th.
And then the, just another point that I want to make about the housing production plan. It's important to realize that this is not something that will be brought to town meeting for approval. This will be something that is approved by the Board of Selectmen and the Planning Board. So it's important for us to stay abreast of what's going on with it through the whole process. So when we get to the end of needing to approve it, it's basically a five-year plan that's approved by those two bodies. So, just so you know that.
And so, but how does it intertwine with all this other stuff going on as far as ADUs and-
Aye, right.
You know, I, to me, I'm just a little bit confused by-
It, the housing production plan will take into account any things, anything that's on the books that might actually help bring more affordable housing to town, and that could be one of the things. But it's not like a bylaw is being written or anything like that. This doesn't go before the town meeting. It's simply something that gets approved by the elected officials on the planning board and the elected officials in the executive branch of the Board of Selectmen. So Alva, they, they will certainly take that into account. And, you know, everyone is encouraged to provide comments like that as well along the way, saying, hey, this new thing's coming along. Is this going to be incorporated into the plan? What are your plans for that? And they'll take that. But it will, it will incorporate anything that is out there that, that could become a tool.
Yeah, they're looking at population. They're looking at age. They're looking at the demographics, the income levels. They're looking at veteran status, female versus male, homes with children, aging in place, if the seniors can afford to stay in town. Do, like, who do we need to, I'm going to say cater to, I don't know that that's the word they would use, but they're looking at that as a way to identify where we need housing, what demographic we're trying to attract or maintain, and identify areas that would be appropriate for development. So that's kind of what we're looking at.
So there's a, there's a 400 square foot state limit that's-
900 square feet.
900 for an ADU.
Or half the gross floor area, whichever is smaller.
But at the town level, we can make it bigger if we want. Is that correct?
Not more than the statute, no.
Okay, not more than, okay.
Under what's called-
They said that, they said that for the ADU part of it, they were saying, because I listened to it today, if you already had-
A bylaw in place.
In place, they said it would be 1200, right.
Correct.
And so what they used was the term a protected ADU, which is this new classification. And if it's going to be a protected ADU, which means someone can just come in and say, I want this, then it has to be 900 square feet or less, because we don't have something in place already.
So what I did want to ask about that is that, because they are looking for public comment on that ADU, is that something that we should have put on the website so that any, you know, anybody-
You can, you can put it up there.
I mean, I just feel like it is, to me, it's important. There should be a lot of questions. I know for myself, it's, oh, is the tax rate going to be, you know, the taxing of a house going to be the same as what you would do currently now? School systems, I mean, we're not taking in anything to say, is that going to increase the population in the school systems? I, I mean, all of these things are like, I may be stressing over something I shouldn't, but I already know that there's a couple of places being done right now, like in large type of things that are using our bylaw, probably because they just want to be able to get it done as soon as possible. And I'm like, oh my God, how, how many are we talking? And, and that scares me.
Well, right now, a two-family is, is, is available by right in our zoning bylaw, if it's attached.
Yeah.
Right.
So if somebody wants to make their single-family home into a two-family home right now, regardless of when this thing kicks in, which is on February 2nd, they can do it, as long as they pay the fee and respect the setbacks and such, or get variances. Anything else on that? I can put a link up-
I, I mean, I think that if we, you know, whether it be on the town website and, you know, eventually put it on, because they're looking for feedback between December 20th and 31st.
Is this from the webinar?
That was from the webinar, and I don't remember the dates.
Online? Is that what you're asking?
No, I'm going to, I'm going to go to the state's resources for where to send comments, and I'm going to put that on our website, and people will be directed there to comment on it.
Can view it.
Yeah.
And that, I just think it would be, you know, they want us to, you know, the municipalities to pipe up, but they, it's public comment. And I just, if the public doesn't know it exists, then-
Right.
Sure.
The next item, every year in December, I come to the board with an updated list of our software and hardware. This year, particularly hardware, as you know, at the Fall Town Meeting, we funded, the town meeting funded new client connection devices. We have those. They're installed. They're now on this list, and the old ones are in storage, and they're in storage on this list. Also, I added all of the new cameras that are at the Centennial Grove and the new server that we're going to have.
I did have a question about, was the memorial, the cameras that are on this telephone pole here?
That is from the old police station. That camera is not active.
Okay, that's, I didn't know that. I can stop waving to what you mean.
Yeah, you can. It's not going to wave back. So what I ask, unless the board has comments on it, is for the board to acknowledge both of these lists, and then I'll update it again next year.
Do you want those acknowledged in a vote, or just?
Yes.
Okay. So I will entertain a motion to acknowledge that we receive the annual update for computer hardware and software inventory lists.
So moved.
Second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. With respect to goal setting, performance review, I can provide you with a list of the different things that were set as goals at the beginning of this calendar year, along with the accomplishments that would fulfill those things. In my report, I listed for the board's consideration seven new goals for the upcoming calendar year. Now, this is not something that you have to necessarily nail down tonight. I just wanted to begin talking about it. And if you need another cycle, we can do that, whatever the board's pleasure is.
So I did want to bring up as far as, you know, documenting like standard operating procedures. You do a lot of things, and I would love to be able to have something so that if that bus hits you, that we have some place-
Yeah, that's all right.
Poor Brendan.
I've already, you know what, I've actually already begun that process.
I think that that should be on here to say that we're walking, I know you're, you're talking into the 30s before you retire, but I think that it would be helpful. And then also, if there's any way that some of those points that you do, if there's some way of you upskilling somebody else so that if you're on vacation, somebody else could jump in to help out.
Tim would be the closest to that activity, but I'm not sure there's too many people that could-
Could follow it.
Yeah. But I mean, I, I'm fine with adding a goal to create standard operating procedures for things that I cover. Do you want to bring this up again at the next meeting?
I'm, I'm happy with the seven goals, and we'll add Alva's recommendation as goal eight, which is to come up with SOP. I mean, I'm not even sure it's standard operating procedures. I think it's more of a job description that-
It's detail, it's a detailed description of all the things I handle and, and everything that surrounds them.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's the task that he's, because if somebody had to go in and take over doing some task, we should know that, well, here's the sta, okay, and it, you know, it's going to have to be a document that changes because we may get a new software, and then you're going to have to figure out-
Yeah.
Right.
If you have to log in as an admin, and Pam, though, how are you going to be able to log in if there's not something that says, go see these people because they have admin rights?
Because there's a document in the town clerk's safe that has all the passwords on it. That part we figured out already.
The only other thing on this that I was questioning to myself is, you also handle 10% of the personnel part of it, of your job. And should something be on here about that as far as?
Well, those are repetitive routine, you know.
That's just part of the job description. That's not really a goal or an objective.
And it deals with everything from helping the board to field new candidates, to unfortunately, when things happen, or, or when people-
Firing somebody.
When people are no longer going to stay with us. All those things come under that, but it's, it's not really spec, you know, specific. It's personnel officer is anything that comes up within that realm, I have to do it.
Lucky you.
Yeah, that's the fun stuff, isn't it? So, all right, well, if there's no other comments, I'll, I can, I can formalize that for this calendar year.
So how do we want to list number eight, though? Do we want to call it an in-depth job description, identifying each of the things that he does? Because it's not really standard operating procedure.
When I say standard operating procedure, I, I say, here's what I do, and here's what, I'm not saying to get it done, you know, within the year. I'm saying to start working on standard operating procedures for different things, just like we're trying to do, or this one here is trying to do with, with the accounting area. Just try and make sure that if somebody had to, they could go look in and say, okay, this is what has to happen. That's all I'm saying, is something to-
Policy and procedures.
Yeah.
It's a detailed description of, of all the areas that I, that I touch.
Because you touch an awful lot of areas.
Well, and part of the problem, I think, where Alva's going with this, and it's where my mind always goes, is that if we have to replace you, hopefully long and into the future, we need to hire four people. So it would be ideal to carve out what you, what you do.
I'm already doing it, actually.
No, I know.
Yeah, and I'm just saying, like I said, I'm not looking for it to be completed by the end of the year. I'm looking to say we-
I think Alva's after your job.
That we're moving forward, and we have that in-
I agree with you, Alva.
Let me come up with a way to describe it, and I'll talk to you at the next meeting.
I do want to go back one second for the software inventory, this is just our inventory, meaning, I know that the town clerk has the state voting...
It's not ours, though, that's a separate...
But I didn't know if it would be in an audit, that's why I was asking.
No, because it's complete, the hardware and software associated with that system is completely owned by, and managed by the Commonwealth. Anything else on that?
Nope.
Municipal fuel depot design update, I did get in touch after we last spoke about this with some additional tank installers, and both of them asked, suggested that I contact web engineering, which is a smaller outfit, and web engineering...
Where are they at?
Uh, I'm sure, I want to say.
Okay.
But he mentioned that he does a lot of these small types of designs, and that he's away on vacation right now, but he can, he will come to the site and look at us, this is all I wanted someone to do in the first place, he will come and look, and he's confident that for $25,000 or less, he will be able to produce a design, if you hire him, that could be costed out by him prior to the annual town meeting, potentially voting on whether you want to install one of these. And he was in the $200,000 range, he thinks, for the installation of this.
And so you got rid of the other guy that kept botching his proposal?
He has a proposal, which I think I sent you, but I haven't called him back on it.
Okay.
And then there was another place that said that they were gonna get me something, but they still haven't.
Yeah.
This person was like, yeah, I'll come to your site, I'll look at what you, this doesn't, he was like, this does not sound complicated.
What you want.
Like, no, it's not, this is, it was refreshing.
Yeah.
You know, my understanding is that the diesel, at the current source of diesel in the town, is probably going to stay in place, but if the town wants to have this, at least to know what it looks like and what it's gonna cost, then you'll at least have that option. The town meeting already did spend the money on, appropriated the money on it.
And that's what I wanted to make sure, that this is indeed, we're getting this information so that we're ready, and we can then make a decision, how do we handle this? Do we, you know, if we know that Ernie's, or I think it's gonna be called Sam's...
I don't know what he's gonna call it, but Samir's the new owner, yeah.
Who already has the information.
Yeah.
But I think at the end of the day, the town has made it clear, through many departments, police, DPW, fire, that being self-sufficient would be key, they've all spoke in favor of having a fuel depot for both gas and diesel, and having access to it 24 hours a day, especially in storm conditions. I think that we got the funding, and we should follow through with what town meeting voted for.
Yeah.
So, I realize that he's gonna have diesel, but I don't think it hurts to, if somebody's saying they'll come out and look at the area, and that they can do it...
And that's what funding, the funding was for that, to look at it.
Correct, yep.
So I'm fine with that, but I'm also a bit cautious. I maybe have, was born and raised by people who are very untrusting, so I have a hard time with having something. And I just want to make sure that we do our due diligence.
Well, and remember, these fuel depots are very secure nowadays, they are on video, so there's gonna be a camera watching every vehicle come in, so it's not like somebody's personal car is gonna get filled up. And you use the pump itself by either a code or a credit card.
Even that.
It's not even that, would it?
It's gonna be an RFID tag, so, in the filler nozzle, right?
Yeah, yeah.
So you pull up in something that doesn't have the tag in there, the pump won't start.
The pump won't start.
That's how simple it's gonna be.
So that means all of our equipment would have that tag put in it.
Yeah, it would have to, or it's, the pump is not gonna start. I already talked with this specific guy about it.
So that's something I was not aware of, and I think that that makes me a little bit more trusting.
Because I said, I said, anyone can have a tag, but unless there's someone watching the camera or looking at the video, you don't know what they filled up.
Right.
This is actually, it's called, he gave me the name, because the person who does the install said, this is the system you need, and this guy was familiar with it, and he's like, yeah, I'll design that right in. And that means you pull up in a car and doesn't have one, the pump is just not gonna turn on. And when you do turn that pump on, it already logs what vehicle it was and how many gallons it got.
Yeah.
So, that's gonna help us for budgeting purposes as well. So, great.
All right, the next thing is the operating capital budget proposal. So, I've done a fairly detailed review of the various things that we feel are going to need to be increased, and they're all explained in the memo. This year also, we were asked by the finance committee to kind of itemize below the individual budget sheets, which is why you have those this year, what each of these light items actually is used to pay for, because the finance committee and the town accountant want to have a better idea about that going forward. So that's a new feature you'll see, a list of those things under each one of the spreadsheets.
So Brendan, on page four, number 14, does the board want to oblige Kenoma Point Association with their request for additional trash receptacles at the point? Do we know how many they have currently?
As far as I know, there's the one that is down on the deck of that small park that we have. I don't know of any of those.
That's it?
Do they take them out? I thought there were others.
I thought that, I thought there was one over in the parking area.
Yeah.
The ones behind the, where the Woodman's house is, I thought I saw...
Because I remember when we temporarily removed the thing, they said it, there was one heavy one, and it was on that...
On the deck.
Deck there.
So I don't...
Well, wasn't there, isn't there one at that other little park where the tables are?
I thought they put one in...
I don't know.
Let me find out from...
The lifeguard area, wasn't there one next to the lifeguard area?
This is why I'm asking, is I, I know that we had residents of Kenoma Point come in very upset when they removed the trash receptacles altogether.
Yep.
And they wanted them back. I didn't realize that there was an ask for additional receptacles.
It's in the same email, I have it here, it's in the same email that was asking for the lifeguard.
Yeah.
Okay, so I thought that was just to put them back.
Remember, we put up the signs to say carry in, carry out.
Yes.
We did have people, they were saying that when they go walking in the morning and they pick up trash, they wanted to be able to throw it out.
Put it in a barrel.
And there was the barrel that was in that parking area off of, I think it's Kenomo Road.
The new, the new one, yeah.
Well, it's just one sentence in the same thing where they asked about the lifeguard, it says, and this is from March of this year, from Craig Markowitz, additionally, the CPA Board also suggests that the selectmen consider deploying trash barrels in sanitary facilities, porta-potties, to adequately accommodate the increasing number of visitors to the Kenoma Point. So, that was where I got it from, I don't, I can find out from Mike how many we maintain out there.
Okay.
Can you ask, I mean, how, $600?
It's because they're those big, huge, heavy barrels that don't blow over.
They'll blow over.
Yeah, they're those solid...
The solar ones?
No, no. They're just, you'll see like they have, like a stone, you know, peystone facade.
So I think Brendan, for me, my question is, I'm not opposed to this, but I'd like to know how many are down there and what the locations are, so if Mike could tell us, because I know they go empty them once a week, or once a day, or whatever they do. So if he could just identify how many there are and where they're at, so we could determine what would be the best placement, if we, if at all.
And as far as the sanitary facilities, we have, I think, two up in the parking lot on Kenomo Lane, but nowhere else, just because we didn't want to have them on the waterfront.
Right.
And that's why we put the sign up?
There's one, and it's a handicap one, right?
It's one, okay. And then the association has their own, I believe, at the boathouse?
Right, at the, at the boathouse.
So, all right, so I'll ask about the barrels. Then, there was another thing in bold on the last page, the lifeguard, okay? They did the math on that, we're talking about $4,000. It's a total of 20 days, nine weekends plus 4th of July and Labor Day, and so the question is, does the board want to put that on the request for this budget cycle? You would not be hiring a lifeguard, you would be paying for a contracted service to the association.
I am still strongly in favor of this. We do, our lease fees are upwards of $650,000 a year, they have been good partners, they don't request anything of the town, and we get a lot of fees from those leaseholds. I'm in favor of this, they, like I said, they don't ask a lot of us, and I think that we need to be a good, good partner.
Yeah, I agree.
And then the capital items are at the back of the package, and it's going to be time to replace our fiber optic network switches, these, fiber comes in from the outside into a town building, and then that gets connected and distributed throughout the building with ethernet ports. These were installed when we first came back into town hall, so that's coming up on eight years ago, and it's time to replace them. But what I'm going to try to do is go for the IT Community Compact in January, so we'll put this in, but I'd like, hopefully, we're going to be able to get a grant to offset this cost. You know, then we talk about the 12 dedicated funds, which we usually have a more detailed discussion around the motion for that. And then, you know, we're talking about a boat motor in FY '28, and we're talking about a, I don't know whether you want to keep this on here, continued review of new access improvements at Kenoma Point. I mean, there's the new seawall, green space, there's the new park, parking lot, there's the dock, you know, ramp and float. Is, you know, is it something where we should push this down the road a little bit? I mean, you have Kenomo...
We're probably not going back there with any activity for a while.
Not soon. You have Beach Circle, but I don't know that you're looking to spend on improving that area. You do have several properties that are in the town's hands there, but it would, there'll be a considerable, considerable design and permitting cost.
Yeah.
And I think with the new elementary school coming, we're gonna have our hands full with that project. I don't, I don't see leaving this on here for fiscal '28, I think, I mean, honestly, I would say to you, push it to fiscal '30, but I think that's even kind of close. I would say we want to push it to fiscal '32, thinking that that'll be kind of after the school closes, that project closes.
I agree.
And even at fiscal '32, that's more for just another, look at it, right.
See how you're doing. Were there other comments on specific budget lines, specific things in the memo?
The only, I did have one comment on, well, another comment, on the increase in the town property line, we're going up, I'm sorry, not town property, yeah, town property maintenance, 193, it's going up $30,000, 9.8%, and I'm just questioning if that's something specific that I missed in the...
If you look at the column to the right, the percentage change, your eye will be drawn to the things. We've got electricity and natural gas.
You're on page...
So, the 193 worksheet?
Yep.
One night, what?
The 193 worksheet?
Yeah, so, yeah, it will look like this, Alva, in fact, it's the biggest one, but they're in order, so it's 193.
Here we go.
I see. So the total is that 9.8, you've taken everything into consideration that brings you to that number?
Right, but you have, you have an increase...
What line are you on?
Well, if you go down the percentage change, you can see where, where we're coming up with these things. We have a 35% increase in electricity supply cost, we have a 30% in natural gas supply cost, we have a very large increase in HVAC maintenance, if we do go down the road of bringing in a company that periodically comes in and maintains the system.
And I'm highly in favor of this, even though it's a huge percentage increase.
So, can I, can I just ask you, though, like, the town property custodian, is that taken into consideration, the ad at the Grove? I mean, are we gonna have somebody cleaning that bathroom once the bathroom gets put in, or...
I believe that the YMCA is gonna clean that bathroom, and so part of the...
They believe that?
Oh, they will be. So basically, at the end of every camp day, they're gonna have to bring that back to spotless, and so that, especially on a Friday when they leave, or the afternoon when people come and they want to use the place, they're, they're gonna be the biggest users, they're gonna need to clean it, they're also gonna need to put a surcharge on this year's camp fee, so that the camp basically pays for the pump oats.
But the bathroom will be open similar to the ones over here, right? So, April to October, whatever it is?
You can, well, we haven't set that yet.
Yeah.
I would say during the high season, it's gonna be, the YMCA is gonna take care of all of that on a daily basis.
Yeah.
But no, we do not, we don't have anyone right now.
Because that's why, I just want to make sure we think about those things. If I was the Y and I came in on Monday morning and saw the place was a mess, am I gonna be willing to pay if the bathroom's a mess when I start my day?
They might have to. They're, they're guests here, they're not paying anything to be here. We don't have it, we don't have that completely worked out yet, we don't even have a bathroom yet.
Well, no, and I was just thinking, these things, we now have the pavilion, it's going to need to be maintained.
What I can say is that the town hall custodian uses the 19 hours here and in the library. The town property custodian scales back their time, is it, is it 10 and then 15, I believe?
It's 10.
It's 10 when the bathrooms down here are closed, it's 15...
He's still doing 10 hours.
Okay, well, even so, that position is funded for up to 19.
Up to 19, so we do have extra hours.
So there's growth there, but we don't spend the money if he doesn't work the hours. So there is something built in there, but we have not gotten to that point either. Then, there was a small increase in sprinkler system maintenance, because they're really asking for us to have that inspection done, test done every year. The next one is in town property expenses, generally, with inflation, we've rounded this up to $25,000, because it's the really, really the only catch-all, where there are broken windows and different things that we can't predict. And then there's a 5% in the blanket liability insurance, because we usually have a 5% increase. If that, and it says in here that if we find that it's less than that, we'll adjust it down for the final copy. You'll get to see this again at your meeting of January 6th, and it's due to the finance committee by January 10th.
Can I give you a typo?
Yeah.
I think it's a typo. On worksheet 543, which is veterans?
Yeah.
Is that supposed to say Essex?
Let me take a look.
The note.
Eastern Essex, yes, Veterans District. Thank you.
You're welcome. Looks good.
Okay. Going back to the agenda. The school district budget coordination meeting summary, from time to time, we've been meeting with the school superintendent, and the assistant superintendent for finance and operations, the two chairs of the Boards of Selectmen, the two town administrators, and the chair of the school committee. And this meeting happened just before, so we should talk about these together, the school district tentative budget hearing, which was last week. Generally speaking, the school committee is still in a situation where they're waiting to see what their health insurance increase number is going to be, because if it's as high as they think, it's gonna be very hard for them to utilize reserves to keep the town apportionments from increasing appreciably.
Why do they think what they think?
They, they are looking at a lot of utilization in their health insurance, and they feel that that is gonna translate to higher rates. It's going to be generally higher rates this year anyway, for everyone in healthcare, but they think theirs is gonna be quite, quite high.
Is this document yours or theirs?
That's their document.
And it says FY '25. Am I crazy, isn't that supposed to be FY '26?
Where in the title?
The whole, see, I'll put the whole thing, it says FY '25.
Yeah, so they probably didn't update it, that was what they handed out, so I made Yeah, so they probably didn't update it. I, that was what they handed out, so I made copies for you, but I'll point that out to them.
Thanks.
And yes, you're right.
So, you know, we don't really know where it's going to end up. I know at the hearing that various viewpoints were, um, registered with the school committee. Um, and then you saw on that calendar that there'll be, I think, a couple opportunities for them to speak about that at, at meetings, and then there'll be a final public hearing, and eventually there'll be a vote to, um, adopt a budget proposal. So I don't know if there are other questions on that, concerns?
Um, well, the only, I mean, the only thing that I took from it is it, it's getting the sense that the, it may be looking at an override, and, um, and I'm not totally opposed to an override, but I'm opposed to an override that doesn't give me a why, um, in order for the, you know, the vote to get passed. So, um, at what I saw, the tentative budget, I, I can't even imagine how much that would be for an override. But what, I mean, what would be the lowest? I mean, if it's, if it's indeed over 2.5, is there some level that we wouldn't have to do an override and then, like, I'm just trying to understand that part?
Well, until we get all of the requests from the departments, which are due, including the budget you just looked at, on January 10th, it's hard for us to say where we are and how much, how much capacity we're going to have.
And we also have three unions that are...
Two, we have two unions, and we don't know what those negotiations will bring.
So that's why I just wanted to, to voice that it's not that, and I don't think, I don't think, I can only speak for myself about not being opposed to an override. I know it's been a long time, but I know also the town has done a lot of things to help avoid an override.
Since 2005, yep.
Monies.
And my comment on it's going to be, I know that the goal would be that we forgot that we talked about an operational review, and that we funded $40,000 toward an operational review, but we still don't have that information. So it, for me, it's difficult for me to support an override when I don't have the things that we asked for. Because how do we know that the money is being used appropriately when we still don't have the answers to the questions that were asked previously and not answered? So that's my only issue, is that, you know, going into override territory warrants more answers than questions, so.
All right. And then I mentioned that there, in my report, that there was a, an accessory dwelling unit regulations webinar. We talked about that a little bit earlier in the meeting tonight. Um, generally, there's this concept of, of a protected accessory dwelling unit, meaning I'm a homeowner in Massachusetts, and I have, I own a property, and I want to take advantage of this new section of state law that goes into effect on February 2nd. And it went through a variety of, um, of, I guess, attributes of, of what will be allowed. As we discussed, the maximum size would be 900 square feet. Uh, they were talking about how much parking is necessary if you are within a half mile of a transit station versus not, et cetera.
Well, and even now, the flag, bus flag, and those are the types of things where they want the municipality to step up and say, you know, because I feel for us, yes, we, we just got this bus. Yes, it's flagable, but we also...
Yeah, right now, the definition of a bus station is any bus line along its entire length where the bus can be stopped by flagging it down is the bus station.
Right.
So the bus station could be 10 miles long.
Yeah, right.
Um, you know, these are, um, they're, they're asking for the comments, and as we talked about earlier, we're going to, we're going to put that information on the website. But they're showing you where they're, you know, where they're thinking about right now. I don't know if there was any other discussion on that. I just put it in there because it was something new.
No, I, I, I would like maybe a few people in town to go in, to the mass.gov/ADU and look to see what's there. And then the opening of the, um, public comment's not going to happen until Friday or Saturday. So, um, more to understand it, um, I, I feel like they came up with the solution to what they feel is a problem and made rules before they actually, I'm like, to me, they should have been done first, before they ever had any policies put in place.
Well, it's because the legislature said, we're going to do this, and here's the concept, and I guess it's not a very long law. And they said, and the details will be worked out by regulation, and that's...
So, and then they're not giving us, um, us as municipalities to make that, you know, to do anything to curtail things, except water and sewer. That's the, really the only thing.
Then the last thing on my report is the first look at the, the topics for the annual town meeting. Um, we have plenty of time on this. It's going to come up every meeting now until, uh, you sign the warrant. I don't know whether you have any comments at this early stage.
I have four.
Okay.
I know you expected that.
Of course.
So, number two, purchase or lease purchase a new fire tanker truck. If no grant, perhaps move to fall town meeting. My recommendation is that we do, in fact, move that to fall town meeting. The tanker truck was just today towed to the, I don't know if it was a dealership or mechanic that works on tankers. They have found a turbo for it, as well as an intercooler, which was identified as the two problems. And they, at fall town meeting, they appropriated enough money to take care of that. So I think although it, it is 30 years old and will need to be replaced, the nice thing about that tanker is, with this repair, should it solve our problems, it does have a nice value. So in, at fall town meeting, if we do end up having to buy a new one, we probably will get close to $50,000 or so for trade or sale of that. So, but I recommend not keeping that an annual and pushing to fall. Next is the special legislation or adoption of new local option statute to cap property taxes based on means testing paid by overlay. Can you just give me some more information on how that landed there?
This was, um, something that came up at the fall town meeting of 2023, and it was actually indefinitely postponed because when, uh, it came, when we started to doing real research on the model that we had put on the warrant, it was determined that in order to give this exemption, um, we would actually have to maintain two separate tax rates, one for the people who qualified for this and one for everyone else.
Well, and we also need to have, how do, you know, how do we know? There's a means, like, so I have a two family. I'm over, someday soon, I'll be over 65. And I have, if I have tenants that are going to the school system, I really shouldn't get a discount.
Well, it's not automatic. You would still have to apply for it.
Right, you have to apply.
Every year.
And so we based on, we based what went into the Essex warrant on a Wakefield model. But then we found late in the game that it might be better to come up with similar language, but with something that's paid for out of overlay, meaning there's not two rates, but everyone still is paying for it because if you increase the amount in the overlay account for the assessors, that gets assessed on the tax, and it actually comes out from under the, you know, takes away from your levy capacity.
Weren't we also delaying because the state was...
Yes, but none of those things came to fruition. Um, in fact, there's a note in here about that somewhere.
Is that still, are they still investigating?
The governor proposed those at the MMA meeting back in January, and I haven't heard a single one of them come to the forefront.
Yeah.
As a, as a real, as a real proposal in the legislature.
But Brendan, so, everything you're describing is exactly what I expected you would describe. My concern about taking this out of the overlay account, which ends up being some of our levy capacity, as things get tighter with the school budget, and we may be forced into override territory year after year, don't you think that capping property tax is going to be detrimental to the town, taking money out of the overlay and not allowing for levy capacity?
Yes, mechanically, yes. The only reason it's here is that when it was indefinitely postponed in 2023, the board said, we want you to at least track the concept. If you're saying you want to put it to long-term or not at all, that's fine.
I, I'm concerned about the financial position that the town is going to be in if we start talking about capping property taxes. So I don't know how you guys feel. I, I'm more inclined to put this long-term and not focus on it.
But doesn't it cap property taxes for some, but others go up more? So you're getting the same revenue, right?
Except if they're going to dip into your overlay, which is something that, it's in account, basic, and I think our account in the, the assessor's office has about, is it 550 or is it close to 800? So the overlay account, was it 550?
It, well, there's a certain amount raised every year, and then if it's not released, it stays in the account. I'm not sure what the current balance is in there, um, but it's true. If you're going to base it on overlay, then it takes away from your levy capacity for anything else, because that overlay each year is in the budget book as its own line item.
Right.
So I'll do whatever, you know, whatever you want. I'm just calling it to your attention.
Yeah, I mean, I agree with you. At this point, we, well, we don't know what's going on.
When we don't know what's going on, I think we put it to long-term.
Lamenting for this, anyway.
Right. And when we get a little bit more, a better understanding of where we are with the new school build and such, we could bring it back, but I think that it's dangerous today.
Yeah, yeah.
So I would say put that to long-term. My next one, Brendan, in keeping with tradition, I want to comment on renew authorization for a 10-year successor lease for the town land benefiting Shays Riverside, and for the lease of the Legion property for the Museum or Historical Society, both expiring June 30th, 2025. So I know that historically, we've been doing 10-year successor leases with both of those. However, this past go-around with Camp Dory, we did a five-year successor. And I'm wondering what the benefit, I know the benefit of the Museum and Historical Society. I'm trying to understand if there's any reason that the town would want access to that Shays Riverside parcel. Do we not want to tie ourselves into a 10-year lease?
Well, the Shays Riverside, it's a corner of the building that is adjacent to Woodman's Landing or Chubby's Beach. There isn't much you're going to be able to do about it.
Oh, I thought the town land was the land on the other side of Shays, which goes out, if you look at the GIS, the town owns the land that goes over to their slips.
This lease is on the left-hand...
This is on the left side?
Left-hand rear corner.
Then disregard, then disregard that. Um, and I understand the need for the, the Museum and Historical Society, so, okay, disregard that comment. And then, down further, it talks about re-appropriating the $50,000 set aside for the Memorial Park courts to the Grove instead. We can leave that there. You may want to bold it. I attended, oh, actually, Peter and I were both there. We were both invited. Um, Peter did not speak. I sat at the table and didn't say very much. Um, but a group met on Thursday night to talk about the best use for the funds and where it should be positioned, and there's still some conversation happening about memorial versus centennial. So I don't know that we should talk about re-appropriating funds until that's been determined.
Right.
Okay, so do you want it as a second tier or a third tier?
I would throw it at second tier and just let it sit there until we hear more.
Okay, any other comments at this time?
That's it for me.
On the second tier, you have the Council on Aging van. I know that, I know that Ann Buckley had grabbed me at the town meeting, the fall town meeting, and had mentioned a grant, but it was a real quick, and I said, you're not going to get that.
And then she came to me and said, you know, this is something we want to, but it was like a week before, and the thing, you know, I'm like, you have, you have to take months to write these grant applications.
Right. And that's what I said to her. I said, the deadline's Friday? Yeah, I said, I'm probably, guess you should probably talk to BZ, but I don't think it's...
She came, yeah.
I went to the Council on Aging meeting last week, and I will tell you that there was a conversation about the van. And come to find out, Manchester was, I don't know if it was a grant van or a gifted van, but it's one that they don't use, and they were in negotiations with trying to buy that van. And I guess the conversation went stale. So I had a call scheduled this weekend with Dawn Burnham, who's very friendly with Nancy Hammond, to see if we could kind of resurrect that conversation, and Dawn had a personal situation, so we weren't able to connect. I do intend on connecting with Dawn this week to see if we can try to move that forward, because the Board of Selectmen in Manchester has the authority to actually donate that to Essex, since it was kind of donated, whether it be via grant or just a donation to them.
Great.
So we're going to work on that.
Nice.
And that's, that's all I had as well. Um, so Brendan, I think that's it for your report. We do have one license that we'll have to return to open session to discuss, but before we adjourn to, executives are not adjourn, but it's until we move into executive session, I'm going to take public comment now, so that people that don't want to wait for us to come back into session don't have to wait. So is, if there's anybody online with us this evening that has a public comment, I'm going to ask you to unmute, state your name and address, and you can make your public comment at this time. Okay, having no public comment, um, we are going to be hearing from Town Administrator Zupurkey to go into executive session, as well as inviting Chair of the Finance Committee, Jody Harris, for a part of our executive session, and then she will leave, she'll be asked to leave the room. And that will be, she'll be joining us with respect to the collective bargaining concerning the possible successor agreement with the Essex Police Association, then she'll leave. We will be coming back into regular session for a potential license vote, or maybe not, and then adjourning, so there won't be much discussion after that.
All right, so I'm going to recommend that the board move into executive session to discuss, uh, collective bargaining concerning a successor agreement with the Essex Police Association, uh, as well as, um, discuss strategy with potential, with respect to potential litigation. Where an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the litigating position of the board, that the chairman declare that covering these matters in open session would be detrimental to the board's, uh, negotiating and litigation, litigating positions, uh, that, and that the board will be returning to regular session after the executive session to, um, finish the meeting's regular business.
So moved.
So we're, we're going to do this by roll call vote, just because it's executive session, we're online. So I'll entertain a motion to move into executive session via roll call vote.
Peter Flippin, aye.
Alvin Harrow, aye.
Ruth Purina, aye. So you can go to Fade to Black. Thanks, Joan. Thank you, everybody that waited patiently while we were in executive session. Um, we did vote by roll call vote to come out of executive session and back into regular session. And at this time, I will entertain a motion to grant the local license renewal for marijuana retail and cultivation license for BB Botanics LLC at 242 John Wise Ave, for the local license renewal contingent on compliance with the existing host community agreements, and reserve the ability to hold a hearing for revocation or suspension in the event of continued non-compliance.
So moved.
Second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And I will entertain a motion to adjourn at 8:44 PM.
So moved.
Second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Joan, thank you. You can go to Fade to Black.